It is, I'm sorry for the delay. 15th meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting the German Township Trustees Board for 11/2022 to order. Could we please rise with pleasure, please?
Pleasure, please. To the high United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Easton, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Dr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Stubbs?
Here.
And Mr. Potter?
Here.
All present.
I'd like to break to the back, also, uh, Chief, and the Road Supervisor Jeremy Holberg is present. Chief of Police, he is present. And I'm expecting him. There we go.
Thank you, guys.
And again, just to announce that tonight's meeting will not be available on my back, so everyone knows. Uh, now it's time for visitor comments. Please state your name and address the first time you approached the board and your name thereafter. Tyler? Anything? Anybody else have any comments? Okay, let's go to move on to the fiscal officers' report.
All right, good evening again. First of all, you now have four sets of minutes in front of you. February 14th, regular meeting, the March 14th, regular meeting, the March 21st, special meeting, and the April 4th, special meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the four sets of minutes, the 12-214-22 regular meeting, the 314-22 regular meeting, the 321-22 special meeting, and the 442022 special meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've also given you the March financial reports. You have the March 31st Fund Status Report, the year-to-date March Cash Summary by Fund, and also the month-of-March Cash Summary by Fund, the March Receipt Listing, and the March Payment Listing. There are three items I want to note. First one is Receipt Number 37 for $10,000, and that is a payment from Germantown Union Cemetery for the loan that was made by the trustees back in 2006. And the remaining loan amount is $19,276.23. Receipt Number 41-2022 is interesting. It's for $605.12, a very small amount, which I wouldn't normally highlight, but this is our share of all of the undistributed funds from the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So essentially, those jurisdictions that chose not to take the ARP money, uh, that money was retained by the state and not sent out, and then it was reallocated to all of the jurisdictions that did take the funds. So we got this little amount, and I assume the next payment will also include a similar amount on top of what we were expecting. And the last item is warrant number 50574, which was paid to, uh, $23,785, paid to our TARM, and that's for our policy from March 28th of this year through March 28th of next year, our insurance policy. So are there any questions about the financials? Hearing none, if I could have a motion to approve the March financial reports, authorize the payment of March bills, those are warrants 50572 through 50577, and vouchers 184 through 272 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the March financial reports and authorize the payments of March bills, warrants 50572 through 50577, and vouchers 184 through 272 for payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I want to, uh, let the public know that the Townships 2021 transactions are now available online at the Ohio Checkbook website, and that is checkbook.ohio.gov. And once you go to the website, click on Local Governments and Schools, then select Townships, and then choose Germantown Township Montgomery. And you can also access that same information from the Township's website using a hyperlink that is on the homepage. The City of Germantown has informed me that they have, the city council at their last meeting approved the appointment of Ransay A. Lindemood Hall to be on the Fire EMS Oversight Committee for a term ending December 31 of 2023. And that appointment, since it's to the Oversight Committee, uh, also needs to be approved by the trustees. And I did send you, per application, for your review, and I think we can just use a motion for that.
Okay, I move to approve Ransay A. Lindemood Hall to the Fire EMS Oversight Committee for a term ending 12/31/23.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I will let, uh, the city know that Ms. Lindemood Hall has been appointed. I attended the Parks Board meeting on April 6th to present information on the budget of tax receipts and payments for 2022. They had several questions, and I explained to the board your positions as trustees concerning retaining 10% of tax collections in the Township's fund balance. And I also told them that upon request, those funds might be available for special projects that are outside of the regular budget. I also attended the Montgomery County Township Association meeting on March 24th, and two presentations were given. One by the Ohio Township Association Legislative Director Marissa Myers, and she did that virtually, and then in person, Montgomery County Board of Elections Director Jeff Rezabig talked to the MCTA. And Mr. Rezabig noted that the county needs 500 additional poll workers for the May 30 primary election. And we actually have application forms. I believe they're on that, those first two chairs in the front row, if you would be interested in working at the polls. Um, at that same meeting, Miami Township trustee John Morris also gave an update on the One Ohio Opioid Settlement and the Establishment in Montgomery County Committee to administer the local settlement funds. And as you heard from George Ann Gottse, the MCTA president, I think that was last month's meeting, that or February, uh, both John Morris and George Ann are the county township representatives on the one local One Ohio Opioid Settlement Committee. Just so you know, I have decided not to attend the two-day Auditor of State Local Government Officials Conference, which is actually Wednesday and Thursday of this week. The agenda topics just didn't seem deep enough for me to justify two complete days in that seminar. I want to remind everyone that we have two township issues on the May 3 primary ballot. The first one is a renewal of the 1 mil senior citizens levy for five years. The taxes will not change, simply a renewal. And secondly, there is the decision whether the Joint Economic Development District should be formed with Germantown, Forestville, and Jackson Township for the land owned by the Valley View schools. I encourage all residents to vote, and if anyone desires an absentee ballot request, we also have forums on those same chairs here in the Township office. Finally, on a personal note, uh, on behalf of my Lions Club, I invite all the Germantown Township children to attend our annual Easter egg hunt at Kircher Park at noon this coming Saturday, April 16th. We did not do that, uh, the egg hunt two years ago. Last year, we did a drive-through, less than successful. We're looking forward to having a real Easter egg hunt this year, and, and something new. All children who attend will receive a prize. But make sure and come early, because the egg hunt is over in less than five minutes.
Less than three.
And also, personal, my Lions Club is holding another drive-through chicken dinner fundraiser on Saturday, and that should be the 23rd in their written report, April 23rd, from 11:00 to 4:00 at Nysonger Field at the Visitor Concession Stand. Tickets are pre-sale only, complete dinners of one half-chicken baked beans, small and roll, for $10. Tickets for the half-chicken by itself are $8, I have tickets, if anyone's interested. And with that, I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Easton. Police Department, Department of Reports.
The only thing I have is to remind everyone that on May 7th, we will be having Shred Day once again, so you bring your papers that you wish to be shredded and your unwanted prescriptions, and we will take them off of your hands. And that concludes my report.
Chair, Jeremy, can you have the Road Department report?
Um, I have a few things. Um, last, at the last meeting, I had brought up, uh, the ARPA money for possibly funding Siegel Road, and, um, I know we didn't really talk much about it, and I didn't know if the board had put any more thought into it. I know Mark and I were going to research a little more on what the requirements were as far as being federally funded or following the federal guidelines, but, um, before I put a whole bunch of work in it, I wanted to make sure the board was either on board or, you know, we're probably talking in the range of, what'd I say, 160, 140,000? So I started looking a little bit on the auditor's website you sent me to.
OTA?
Yeah, OTA, and then there was another one. Who was the other one?
Office of Management and Budget.
Yes, yeah. Looking there, it's, looks like it's going to take more than just a few months of perusing the internet to find the answers that we're looking for, so, um, like I said, I just wanted to get the board's opinion on it before we sink all this time into research.
And we're able to do this on top of the other projects we're doing?
Yeah. If we use, yeah, that was the plan.
So just me start off, I have no problem using the money for Siegel Road?
Yeah, I'm not asking for a commitment.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think it'd be a good investment to use that for Siegel Road.
Yeah, right, absolutely.
Is there any way to keep the trucks off?
Just look into it, make sure I have no issues. I actually talked to Montgomery County about that the other day, and boy, I got stonewalled.
Really? Is that coming through there?
Real bad.
Yeah, narrow road, using it as a shortcut, so.
I, I told the Assistant County Engineer that, and I just got flat out stonewalled.
Especially, I mean, it's a steep hill going.
He was aware of it, and, yeah, I got nowhere, which was very unfortunate, so.
It would just be nice if we could keep those big trucks off after we get it, are able to get it done.
Second item is just to keep you up to date where we've been up to. We're prepping the dump trucks and, uh, equipment for summer use. Have taken some of the salt equipment and washed it up and put it away, um, off of 116. One of the dump trucks still has a salt spreader, just in case, like last Saturday, but we need it luckily. Took the reach mower off the, uh, John Deere tractor to install the road mower, so we're getting ready to probably start mowing roads in a month or so. Also, Butter Street resurfacing. I talked to Chip Waring with the City of Germantown last week, and it kind of sounded like Barrett paving, uh, should begin work on Butter Street probably the middle of April. So the first thing they'll do is they'll mill the surface off, and then they'll come in and do any deeper repair that needs to be done, or that has been marked out to, uh, addressing failing areas that go deeper than what they've filled off, and they'll come back and repaint them. Uh, he also didn't know, he just, let me back up, he said they were going to start in the middle of April. He didn't know whether they were going to start on Route 4, on New Butter, or that section that we're doing jointly together. So it could be middle of April, could be closer to the end of April, depending on how long it takes them to get around and do those sections, so.
Chairman, question?
Yeah.
Do we have a, any requirement, or maybe not a requirement, to notify the people on the Township side of the road that this is coming?
Uh, it, it, we're not required to. The only person on the Township side is point source. I'm sorry, I'm at one end, okay, I was thinking on the one end, point source is the only one on the other side. Um, it is on the city's website. Uh, we could put it in our, you know, Facebook or something like that, once I get a, maybe a little tighter schedule, but we normally don't do, like, door hangers or, or anything like that.
Okay, I didn't know, how you handle that?
Usually, they are really good about controlling traffic and, you know, letting people in and out, stuff like that. It's, it's kind of a hassle for a day or two, but then, then resolve, and it's usually pretty happy, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we begin mowing the grass, we mowed the township yard, uh, last week, yeah, last week, and probably start mowing the cemeteries whenever the grass dries up, because they need it. Um, the only other thing that's not on my report that I, uh, forgot to include is I will be putting out the chip seal bid for 2022, um, to be open at the next board trustee meeting. So there'll be a bid open, little chip seal at the next meeting, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Good, thank you, Jeremy. The zoning department?
Uh, yes, we had a, sorry, I didn't, uh, send out a written report, I was not aware until right before this meeting I was giving a report. Um, but in the last month, we, uh, there's a new house on Sugar, uh, a couple of pole barns scattered, one on Anthony, I can't remember what the other road was, uh, right offhand. Uh, we have the money for the school, um, is that on your report, Mr. Cross? Okay. Uh, and then we have a BZA hearing coming up for a law split on Germantown-Middletown that the, uh, BZA is aware of, uh, and that's just in the starting process now, uh, but that concludes my report.
What is that hearing?
Uh, it'll be the next, the May BZA meeting, so that would be the day after your meeting.
Yeah, 5/10/2022. Uh, so a zoning certificate was also issued on 4/4/22 for a new home on Sunsbury, in Sunsbury. Uh, the zoning commission met on 4/5/22 to discuss goals for 2022 and also get the changes to the zoning resolution that were approved by the trustees on 7/12/2021 incorporated in the current zoning resolution document. The zoning commission is also working to get those changes recorded at the Montgomery County Recorder's Office. And I actually called the Recorder's Office on 4/7/22 and was told the changes have never been recorded, so those will get, those will get in, and we can add those to the zoning resolution anytime. Um, the Board of Zoning, uh, the Board of Trustees approved, appointed Mr. Heistin, Heiston, as a backup zoning inspector at the 4/4/22 special meeting. We were advised by our legal counsel we should have a backup zoning inspector in instances where the regular zoning inspector is unavailable to serve the township or conflict of interest is present with the current zoning inspector. The Township received a public records request for the video of the BZA case 2022-60CUV. There was some question of the, on the chain of custody of the thumb drive used to download the meeting. I can guarantee the chain of custody was not compromised, and the meeting will be uploaded to the Germantown Township YouTube site as soon as possible. Next, basically, I just brought this before the Board of Trustees, because I had some questions on it, I think that the Board of Trustees should make this decision. So Shay Perry, owner of Paw Paw's Lodge at 15026 Oxford Road, contacted me on 3/8/22. She wished to, wished to expand her dog boarding business, add additional tiny houses, and she was having trouble with the Germantown Township zoning department. When the original variance was, variance was approved on 12/17/2019, there was a condition added that any additional structures must be approved, and it didn't say who must approve them. At the time the variance was approved, I don't think the BZA knew that the boarding of dogs was considered agricultural production under ORC 929.01. If so, the original variance may have been unnecessary. So this is a, a letter I composed, so, um, this parcel ID is D14008090013. The background information, Mrs. Perry, was approved for additional use on 12/17/2019 that allowed her to have kennels with the boarding of dogs in an A agricultural district per Article 8, Section 803D of the zoning resolution. Mrs. Perry was also granted a variance on 12/17/2019 to have four 96-foot structures up to board dogs, bearing from one structure allowed, allowed per Article 38, Section 3804B of the zoning resolution. So Mrs. Perry, per your inquiry of 3/8 concerning expanding her boarding kennel business, I have come to the following conclusions. Parceling question is listed on Montgomery County Auditor's site, it's 20.23 total acres, and it's owned by Estelle McGee, Mrs. Perry's grandmother. The lay-of-use description is A cash grain or general farm. The owner cash rents 10 acres annually for the protection of field crops. Total cash rent is $1,500 per year. Ohio Revised Code 956.01 states, "Boarding kennel means an establishment operating for profit that keeps houses and maintains dogs solely for the purpose of providing shelter, care, and feeding of dogs in return for a fee or other consideration." Prior to the 1970s, courts found that bar, boarding of dogs was not considered agriculture under ORC 519.01. Whoever that definition has changed, care of dogs is now considered animal husbandry and is considered agricultural production under ORC 929.01. Based on the above facts, the property at 15026 Oxford Road is considered a farm under the definition of farm under ORC 901.80A4 that states, "Farm means land that is composed to abstract, tracts, lots, or parcels totally not less than 10 acres devoted to agricultural production." Since this property is considered a farm and is used for agricultural purposes, and according to ORC 519.21A, Section 519.02 to 519.25 confer no power of any Township Zoning Commission, Board of Township Trustees, or Board of Zoning Appeals to prohibit the use of any land for agricultural purposes or the construction or use of buildings or structures incident to the lay use for agricultural purposes of the land on which such buildings or, or structures are located. And after conferring with our legal counsel, I've reached the following conclusion. Mrs. Perry can expand her business and add more boarding kennels without further approval from the Germantown Township zoning department. So that, that's the background. I think that anyone who's been, been past there realizes that it's a very clean business, that the, the tiny houses look great, uh, and I think, again, going by the ORC, I think that it's pretty, uh, pretty evident that it is a farm and should be covered in the, uh, under agriculture. So basically, I'm asking the trustees to approve that so that we can actually just have the zoning inspector sign this letter and send that off to her, and she can, because again, it is, it is in my consider, consideration agricultural, she should be able to add any, any, any buildings, any, any structures she wants on that.
And this has been approved by legal counsel?
Yes, it was by legal counsel, so.
Yep. Resolution?
Um, I may, I, but you want a resolution or a motion?
Since we're not doing anything other than just confirming that there's nothing we need to do, I think a motion's fine.
Fine. I would like to make a motion that the property at 15026 Oxford Road be considered a farm and exempt from zoning oversight.
Second.
Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, I just wanted to clear that up, it's been kind of sitting there for a while. That is all I have for zoning. So, go, moving on to trustee reports, Mr. Potter?
Well, the last month I have been under the weather, so I have not, I did not go to the Parks Board, uh, this month. I was tested, I'm not COVID free, but, uh, I did talk to Terry Johnson, he was on vacation in Florida, uh, to get with him, and David Short, who was in France at the time, at Normandy, uh, for some things, so to talk to them about the Miami, uh, military party, uh, to discuss some stuff about that I got going on. And, uh, I did get an email, I forwarded it to you guys about the, the park fund. Did you guys see that and read that?
Yes.
There really wasn't anything in there about the whole back, was there?
So, well, it says that 15 days, after the 15th, it's 25% of the total parks established for the year, and then within 15 days after the first property tax, it gets the other 75%.
So what was the board's feeling, you were there, what was the board's feeling?
This wasn't even discussed, this agreement.
Oh, it wasn't?
But the agreement is, can't be done the way it's written. The funds aren't available that early in the year. It makes no sense, and then it goes on to talk about sending more funds after you've given everything.
Right, it's, it's a terrible agreement. And it's from 2009.
And, and I think that's the one thing that the city also recognizes, that these agreements are not, are not good, they're not consistent across all of the shared levy platforms.
Mark Keener and I sat down with Judy, what's been, four years ago, five years ago?
I, I wasn't here very long when we went up there.
And we were trying to get some clarity at the time, and it was confusing, and they didn't know, and, you know, I, I, well, we, we tried a couple years ago, is what I'm trying to say, so.
Do we need to get counsel involved in it?
Their counsel.
Their counsel.
If they want it changed from what we are currently doing.
Okay, even though this says?
I can't do what it's, this is just, it's impossible to do what that agreement says.
And I think most of those agreements have some verbiage in there about giving the money, like, upfront at the beginning of the year. As Mr. Easton said, the cash is in there, I'd like to do it, so. Years ago, we used to be much more flush with cash, so I don't know if the general fund was advancing money to these other funds and then getting it back as we got it in from the county. I mean, that was all for my time, so.
Well, to put it back in the general fund would require, if I understand, in a court order?
Uh, no, no, you can do an advance.
Oh, an advance, okay.
An advance, and then once the money's there, you can just.
A transfer would be different than an advance.
You're right. So, but.
I'm not going to do anything different until, I mean, it's interesting to read, and that's, I filed it away.
Mr. Stubbs?
I just have a few things tonight. The cemetery, we began, they began spring cleanup, uh, and they're about to begin the mowing for the season, and they are currently prepping for, um, Memorial Day. The pool, we did, we did have a quorum for oversight, but we did not for the pool board. Um, it was announced that Haley's been hired by the city in some capacity, and I guess you're taking the minutes for those meetings going forward?
Um, yeah.
Okay, so, um, and that's all I have, yeah.
I got, I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, the little accident that Mark had with the stones, it's all been resolved?
So they are able to, um, most of the stones were fine, one of them's going to need some, some work or replacement. Uh, they're, they're just in the process of cleaning them up. The insurance company has been, uh, involved, and very pleasant to deal with the whole way, but it's all.
No, 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 no proceed problem?
No, 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 they're getting it taken care of, it should be done sooner than later. But like I said, the insurance adjuster has been very nice and helpful, and, um, they've got Anthony Burkett of Burkett Memorial Engravings inspecting them, so. But I know they're cleaning them up, and they expect most of them to be fine, restored, fine, so, yep. And that concludes my report, so.
Thank you. Okay, my report, I've got a couple things. I attended the Fire EMS Oversight Committee meeting on 4/4/22. Chief Aldridge presented his report stating that as of 4/4/22, there have been 292 calls for the Fire EMS service for 2022. That has been about a 13% increase over the same three months in 2021. Lack of manpower continues to be the department's biggest issue. Chief Aldridge will present changes to the Fire EMS employee pay, pay scale at the 4/4/22 Germantown, Germantown Council meeting, and that was later on that, that evening. Those changes will reflect a study led by the city manager that is recommending that base pay be increased to all classes of Fire EMS employees, and that the Fire Department move to a 24-hour schedule and pay personnel their hourly rate for time spent in the station. Currently, only day crew is paid their hourly rate, and night crew receives $2 per hour plus run pays. So even though they're, they're all night long, they get $2, so that's what they're trying to have, that's kind of interesting. Changing to this increased pay schedule will add an estimated $91,413 Changing to this increased pay schedule will add an estimated ninety-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty dollars to the budget annually, plus cost of living increases. The city manager's report also stated the following findings. This model is sustainable until mid-year twenty twenty-five, at which time both the Fire EMS funds will be tapped out. There will still be an overall balance of two-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand in the capital funds accounted at the end of twenty twenty-five, again, considering the cost to replace the fire engine, probably not too much. The township had, also, this was stated, the township has significant fund variance, or balances in both the Fire and the EMS accounts, and these should be added to the equation to extend the sustainability of the funds through twenty twenty-six. So I thought that was interesting, so they're trying to use those funds that were held back for emergencies to bolster their, their, their Fire EMS accounts. Replacement levies should be considered for the two Fire EMS levies in the next year or so. It was noted that the Germantown Rescue Squad donated, donated two-hundred-thousand dollars to the Fire EMS department, no one knew if that emptied their, their balance. The Oversight Board also approved spending thirty-three thousand to fifty thousand of the, with the funds coming from the parks, the city, and the Fire EMS accounts to build a new basketball court at Veterans Park. The new Fire EMS building encroached upon the existing court, so I'm not sure exactly where that's going to be, but that's the, what they're allocating to, to do that. Lastly, I give a presentation outlining a seminar and updates from the state Fire Marshal that I attended at this year's Ohio Township Association Conference. The Senior Oversight Committee will meet this Tuesday at, at four-thirty PM, and there has been an application by a resident to join the Senior Oversight Committee. Once that application is forwarded from the city, we will consider that application also.
That's what we did tonight.
No, that was for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, senior, we did Fire EMS.
Yeah, so that's the senior.
Sorry.
That's good. So that's all I have for my report. Moving on to old business, I've got, I'm sorry. Just an update about the complaints received by Germantown Oil Company using the barn at sixty-five-ninety Diamond Mill Road to store his, his oil trucks. I have driven past his business on Route Four several times in the last month, and he seems to be parking his trucks there overnight. Zoning Inspector Sewell stated on three-fourteen twenty twenty-two that she spoke with the property owner, and he stated that he is not moving his business from Route Four. Lastly, I spoke with Jeff Dondaro on three-eight twenty twenty-two, and he has not seen any trucks enter and you're leaving the property lately. So we'll continue to monitor that situation. So again, I would like again to discuss the fee charge to the Valley View Local School District to receive a zoning certificate permit from Germantown Township Zoning. As you may remember, the Germantown Township BZA approved a conditional use in four variances on the three, on three-eight twenty twenty-two. Valley View Local School District can now apply for their zoning certificate. If the township adheres to our fee schedule, the fee would be forty-four-thousand-one-hundred dollars, which is six hundred dollars plus twenty cents per square foot on a two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-five-hundred square foot structure. I would like to recommend that Germantown Township set the fee at ten thousand dollars as follows Miami Township, that has a ten thousand dollar maximum fee. Please note that once the fee is set by the trustees, the Valley View Local School District will submit the application with the fee. And it's really just a matter of filling out a form, because they've already given us all the information they need for the variances and the conditional use BZA meeting. So, discussion. I think, again, to chart that entire amount for the amount that it costs the township is, is really kind of exorbitant. By, by setting it at ten thousand dollars, it allows us to have some funds available if, if during instruction or any other phase, we need more police to be up there for traffic, whatever, it does give us a cushion. But also, and then also gives them back thirty-four thousand one hundred dollars that they would have, they would have given to us. So it's good for the schools, good for the kids.
I'd... I'm fine with your, your suggested price, and maybe change the zoning at some point to, to cap it.
To, yeah, to cap it, it's kind of funny, and that's just what I was going to ask, do you have to do a resolution or a motion to change the fee schedule? Because we just changed the fee schedule.
That wouldn't be changing the fee schedule, it would just be adjusting it for a case-by-case basis, which they're allowed to do.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to introduce Resolution twenty-two-dash...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. To set the fee for the zoning certificate for the Valley View Local School District's new PK through twelve building at ten thousand dollars.
Well, you've already had discussion, but is there any more? Hearing done, I will call the roll.
Before, before you do that, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Just, because we did this fee schedule when I was up there, and just didn't come up, because you don't think about somebody built a two-hundred thousand square foot, but what happens if there was a, a business that wanted to do that? Just before you guys approve this, you know, what would you do in that case? What were considerations, you know?
I think we need to put a ten thousand dollar cap.
Yeah.
On the schedule. That's the one thing I'm asking, because I think you are kind of setting precedent, right? And what if there was another Dubs that wanted to come into the township or something like that? Would you guys want to do the same thing? And maybe you would, but I just think you...
Is Miami Township's capped?
Miami Township's capped, so it goes from six hundred dollars to, you know, ten thousand dollars maximum.
Yeah, I don't want to go on a case-by-case going forward, it needs to have a, you're right, so good question, but...
Sorry, Tyler Rayburn, eighty-one ninety-eight, what makes your...
Thank you.
I would like to look at capping it in the, in the, in our zoning fee schedule.
Yeah.
If not tonight, sometime this summer, probably.
And we did change the fee schedule in the last twenty-one months, so whatever that costs, we're, you guys can...
Yeah, without, we're, we'll look at that again as we go through.
Well, this resolution only deals with this specific instance.
Correct.
Right.
Any more discussion anywhere? All right, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two-dash-nineteen is adopted.
Thanks, and that, basically, again, I will let the school treasurer know that's ready to go, and they can fill out their application and send us a check. So new business. I move to go into executive session per ORC one-two-one-point-two-two-G-one to consider the discipline of a public employee. Mr. Heiston, may I have a roll call?
I'll second.
I'll second. We don't have to get that.
Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Okay, it is now eight...
Fifty-one, or seven fifty-one.
Seven fifty-one, yeah, seven fifty-one. The board will now move into executive session. I would like to invite Fiscal Officer Mark Heiston also to the executive session.
Oh, and you, you guys, you don't need to say this, is that right?
Did you need to turn that on, Rod, or...
Uh, no, I've turned it off for now, but I need it on, yeah.